Nobody could find a place to park.
These are all the applicants, so we're ready to go.
All right. It's 7:00 PM and I will officially start the zoning board of appeals meeting for July 8th of 2025. I'd like to begin the meeting with a pledge. If everyone could please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Catherine, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Follow.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Santola.
Here.
Mr. Mascarett.
Here.
Mr. Corso.
Here.
Mr. Miss Corsi.
Here.
Mr. DeMarco.
Here.
The agenda this evening, we have one tabled matter, ganter, and three scheduled matters. We do have proof of publication that was in the Webster Herald from last week. I will ask that anyone who's wishing to speak during the public hearing portion will sign in at the podium with your name and address. And then if you are wishing to speak, you'll be limited to five minutes, and then we will continue to the next person. The board does reserve the right not to start any further applications after 10:00 PM if need be. And with that, what am I missing? We'll start with the first tabled application, 771 Ridge Road, please.
So property address 771 Ridge Road, applicant Alan Mallett?
Mallett.
Mallett. Zoning district is the MC Medium Intensity Commercial. The request is a use variance to allow a service garage to an existing auto sales business. The proposal is a construction of an approximately 2,856 square foot detached service garage. Relevant sections of the town ordinance, section 350-1A MC Medium Intensity Commercial and 350-101D 2A, which is for a use variance. Over to you.
So I put together this packet. I hope it's everything you guys were asking for. I hope it's... If you have any questions on what is... and put it into this packet, I'd be more than happy to try to answer to the best of my ability. So would you guys like me to go through it, or you guys just want to ask me questions on anything on it, or?
Is there anyone who has any questions on the material that we received both last week and then both last week and the previous meeting? All right, I guess I do have a question. I needed a spreadsheet, so I took all of the numbers that you put together in the document. So according to the information that you provided, if you're outsourcing the service on, I'm going to call it, pre-sale and post-sale warranty, so pre-sale service, when you outsource it, it's approximately $1,666 per vehicle. And if you were to insource it, it's about $1,091 per vehicle. And then your warranty would be approximately $900 versus $600 for vehicles based on the information that you provided with your labor rates versus outsourced labor rates. And then looking at your sales per year, from your 2023-24 sales from April 1st to March 31st were 321 vehicles. And then that same period, 2024-25, was 360 vehicles.
Correct.
Okay. So as I'm running through my spreadsheet, it would appear that you're outsourcing service costs of between $600,000 and $700,000 a year?
Yeah, I mean mathematically, I mean, all accounts for accountable for, yeah.
Okay. And then in-sourced, it would be between 410 and 460, roughly 1,000. So which, either way, it's about a $200,000 savings per year for the applicant to be able to do the service in-house as opposed to having to farm it out to other people. And that doesn't take into account potential delays or delays in either your current customers getting their vehicles back or new customer, you being able to get a new car into the fleet in order to sell it, as well as that doesn't take into account if you get price increases because right now you're getting volume discounts?
Correct, yes. Right now, the service garage we currently do business with give us discounted labor rates because of the volume of business that we do provide them.
Okay. It just seemed like a lap. So when I threw all of your numbers into a spreadsheet, I was like, oh my gosh, that's... It doesn't look like a lap per vehicle if it's, you know, $1,600 or $1,100. But over the course of every vehicle?
It adds up fast.
It adds up quickly.
So in rough figures, right? I lost the screen that was in front of me, but I think it's $600 a vehicle times 360 vehicles. Is that right?
It's a...
Which is about $216,000.
Pre-sale, approximately, the savings for, before the car is sold pre-sale is $575, approximately the savings per vehicle.
Right. So we just round it to 600 times 350 vehicles, right?
Yep.
That's somewhere around a couple hundred thousand dollars.
210,000.
Right, that you put back in your pocket. Okay. So, and, you know, again, when you read what's required of a use variance, we asked, I think, to give greater context for the board last time, that we have an idea of the business savings. But the analysis really runs to the property more so than the business. But I still think it is a good thing for the board to work through, for the... to get the context of why this is a hardship. Okay, so that $200,000, give or take, juxtaposed against the cost to build, pay the mortgage, right? Was that in the previous chart?
The building cost was in our application.
To the application.
Okay. And so what does that take up?
$100,000. It'll be built in six months, it says in the application.
Okay. And so obviously, it doesn't... We don't know what the increase in the taxes is. I'm assuming there's some utility costs. But it sounds like, obviously, over a 10-year period, you're going to... That $10,000 will be washed into the $200,000 savings. So certainly sounds like it's a net positive for the building of the building.
And then how do we, and maybe it's... We did public hearing the last time. Do we want to reopen it, or? Does anybody else from the board have any questions at this point in time?
No.
All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against this application? All right, see, no one. Return the discussion back to the board.
I don't recall what the proof was in the record from the first meeting regarding the inability to use the property for any of the other permitted uses. Was that covered?
I don't know that we covered it because the property is already an auto sales business.
He just wants to add the garage to do this extra part of his business.
He's not looking to change the business or sell the property.
Right.
So that standard's kind of... How do I interpret it for an existing business?
He just wants to build a garage, do repair work in the back of his sales department.
It's essentially addition... No, I understand that, but you're changing the use of the lot. I mean, that's the whole point of the use variance.
Right.
Let me say this. There's going to be a difference between what makes logical sense and what the law requires.
Okay.
Which is not unusual, okay? And so the use variance requires that analysis that the other permitted uses will not allow a reasonable return on the property. And looking at what the other uses are there.
How could there be any other uses if he's already got a used car? What are the uses?
They already got the sales department. He just wants to cut his expenses down by offciting his repairs.
Yes, sir.
And going from there because across the street, you've got a Ford dealership, a Chevy that already have it. He just wants to do this for himself to make more money.
That's the logic part of it. I get that. That's not law stuff.
Okay.
To answer your question, what you would do is you'd have to move your business to a location where you can have a mechanic's garage.
To me, that doesn't make sense.
Well, again, that's why I practice my comments by saying logic versus what the law requires. Board can do whatever it wants, all right?
Well, all right, go ahead.
My job is to define what the legal requirements are.
So let me ask the other...
I'm not saying to deny the application. I'm just saying, if the record is complete, it should at least review what the other allowable uses are for the lot. That's all.
Okay. And...
What are those? Can the staff tell us what those are?
There is a number of allowable uses for this zoning district, which I'll pull up for you to review. So in this zoning district, you can have appliance sales, a bar, tavern, and cocktail lounge, child and elderly care facilities, a commercial print shop, a commercial recreational facility, a convenience store without gasoline sales, a drugstore, employment agency, floor coverings, a funeral home, a furniture store, a grocery store, an indoor amusement center, lawn and garden supply store, medical and dental clinic, office machine sales and services, printing and publishing establishment, a restaurant.
So what section is that?
This is section 350-18.
Okay. And there are numbers, 1 through... What's the last number?
26.
26.
Very good. So the standard is not, I own the property, this is what I want to do, and I don't have to uninclude because I don't want to sell the property. That's not the standard.
Well, and I understand that if I am the property owner and I'm trying to sell the property and I can't get anybody within any of those uses to purchase it, that's typically when we see this, is when it's a use variance because I can't find a buyer within the purview that's permitted. But in this instance, it previously was an automotive sales and service department. I believe Neary was the last one that was in there.
Hey, but just hold on that. Was this a service location?
He had service there?
There was no previous variances for service, just sales.
You were indicating with the sales and service?
It was sales.
If that's accurate, that's, I'm sure, helpful.
It was like, if you didn't buy your car there, you're certainly not going to take your car there. But they did work on cars that they were selling, was what I was led to believe, trying to buy things from them.
Yeah, that fact is a fact, and it's in the record. So be it. I wasn't aware of that.
And I don't know how long it sat empty before the current owners owned it. So, and that would have probably been the time to come for service, but at the time you guys came for vehicle sales, not realizing what an impact it would be on your business not to do the service in-house. Can the board, or how does the board consider that if I leave this driveway and turn left, I've got two automotive sales and service locations that are on the same side of the road?
I think that goes to the...
That goes within the findings?
Well, it goes to the criteria that...
Changing the character?
Correct. And it certainly does that. No question about that.
So if I run through the standards, the first one is the applicant cannot, either will or will not be deprived of all economic use or benefit from the property. Now, it's not that he'll be deprived of all economic use, but based on the information provided to us, it would be approximately a cost... All right, is a reasonable return if I'm losing $200,000 a year by having to send out for service?
See, the reasonable return is typically measured by the allowable uses on the property, which the board is skipping over, that part of it, or the applicant is skipping over that part of it. What the board, I agree with the board, says, hey, look, this is different because he's already operating a business there. No question about that. But there needs to be, or the applicant wants, an additional component of the business, which is not allowed. So you need a use variance. And typically, in a use variance, the reasonable return is characterized by allowable uses, akin to when you sell a piece of property. If you can't sell it and get a reasonable return, that's usually driven by the fact that allowable uses for that property, no one's interested in buying it because they cannot operate it and get a reasonable return. The sale price is too cheap, too cheap for the seller to sell.
So I have a question. I'm going to change your scenario. Let's say hypothetically, let's say everything gets approved, he builds it. Now he wants to move his business to another town, okay?
Correct.
Or closes off, whatever the reason might be. Because now he has to go sell. First of all, if he doesn't find a business or a buyer, if the buyer doesn't want to use like the sales room, they may just tear everything down and then build what they need. How does that now come into effect? Because what if it's like, so what you're saying is, it's got to be usable for this, or it's got to be the criteria, which I understand. But like, let's say, you know, I don't need a showroom. I don't need this. So I'll buy it, tear everything down, and build something brand new that fits the code. How does that fall into place?
I don't think I understand the question. If he sells the property and someone else...
Wants to buy, but doesn't want to put an auto dealership or anything with sales or automotive. And they said, I just want a piece of property. I'm going to rip everything down and build my own building. How's it change?
It doesn't. There's nothing...
Then there would be no use variance needed.
Yeah. But you're saying if he goes to sell, it's a hard time for him to sell. That's what I'm saying. You know, you're trying to find someone who meets that criteria. Like, you know, because right now, it's set up technically for some automotive sales and service.
The applicant can sell the property anytime he wants.
Right.
The person that buys it doesn't have to have a projection of what they're going to build. Most commercial buyers will say, hey, I want to buy your property. So it's contingent of the town's approval to put X, Y, Z on the property.
So, but would... Could I take the first standard and look at it in one of two ways? Either I'm the owner of the property, trying to sell it, and I can't for a reasonable price based on there's no, none of the current uses are of interest. Or can I look at it as the operator of the existing business who, if I can't add another portion to that business, another function to the business, I'm not realizing a reasonable return with what I have, so I have to expand my scope?
I don't think that's the standard. However...
How do we know?
How do I know? I know what...
What's in our founding fathers' deed?
In the state of New York is, listen, let me turn this inside out. The board ultimately can vote out whatever way it places. And if no one challenges it going forward, it becomes a fix. It's law. It's enforceable. When I say turn it inside out, is that this board, when it creates a precedence, all right? And another applicant comes in and says, hey, look, I'm... Don't worry about whether the other approved uses can function here or not. I want to add a barber shop to my grocery store because my kids are barbers and I want everybody on the same planet. Got all the people coming to the store, they can get their hair cut. It's just, it's a great setup. You're going to have to treat... If that applicant indicates, hey, look, over on 771 Ridge Road, you let this applicant expand their business to a use that's not allowed there. And you did not make the applicant demonstrate how the current uses that are approved, how he can't get a reasonable return on his property. That's what I mean, turning it inside out.
Well, because you...
It makes logical sense what the applicant wants to do. You know, we're all sitting around having a cup of coffee. It makes perfect sense. It's a great idea. I get it. But the board just has to be wary of the fact that going forward, you're stretching, or diluting, or limiting the standard, in my legal opinion, by taking on that determination. I think the applicant has provided exactly what we asked him to provide from last week.
All right. How do we, as a board, if, and I guess I don't know what the other board members feel is appropriate based on their background and experience, but how would we tidily bundle it with respect to a use variance if that is indeed what the board elects to do for this applicant? How do we do it correctly and legally so that if it were to be challenged, the man next to me that has to defend it would be able to do so appropriately?
Sir, any benefit to the fact that there are so many? I mean, he's not alone. I realize the other users there were pre-existing before the ordinance got changed. And I'm not sure the ordinance should have been changed personally, at least to exclude... Because you have, within walking distance, five car dealerships that all have service. And I think the biggest difference here in challenging the, using the barber shop scenario, is there aren't any other barber shops in that neighborhood. But look over here, there are several car dealers that have repair shops. And in my mind, it fits in the area, but...
I guess my concern, since you brought it up, it's not, and I agree with the barber shop scenario, I think was a good illustration, but essentially, there's the same use going out all around it, I think. I'm not trying to speak for the board, but it's kind of hard to tell them no when, within a mile away, everyone's doing the exact same thing. But since it is specific to this application, how much are we opening up the town and someone in your position to someone that wants to put up a drive-in theater in a residential district? Because they could say, well, you let someone along Ridge Road do something that wasn't already allowed, so why can't I do it on my property? And I'm going way off board with the illustration. But at some point in time, and I know there's a difference between common sense and what's legal. So I guess my concern was, well, at least not until you brought it up and made it a clear point, are we jamming up the town? If we look at this and say, yeah, I don't see any issue with it from a common sense point, I honestly don't know whether or not someone else is going to come by 10 years from now and say, hey, let this guy do this so I can do anything I want in my yard. And you have to let it, you have to let me do it because you gave this guy.
Except that we do consider each application to stand on its own merit.
I know that, but that's why he just said that we're opening ourselves up because, like I said, I think this is a...
But if we button it up tightly and make sure that it's...
I'm on your side. I'm just thinking that...
But yeah, anybody can interpret anything.
That's what I'm saying. But I wasn't concerned about the legal aspects of it until he pointed out. And I don't want to do that. I mean, this is... But I also believe that the property, the existing use with the proposed addition, I don't think, first and foremost, it's not going to be a detriment to the neighborhood.
Or the environment.
Or the environment. The only question I would have is, and I know it's supposed to be gray here, what's a hardship? You know, I can't make a million bucks a year and my property isn't necessarily a hardship. And I know he didn't say that, but I don't know where the line is drawn at a hardship. So, but I was, in my opinion, that wasn't as important as look on either side of him and across the street, it's no different even though there's that zoning line.
Right.
And that was my big gotting until our esteemed attorney brought up the legal aspects of it.
Well, and if I look at standards 2 through 4, the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or the neighborhood, I would say in that case, yes, because everybody around him is doing exactly what he would like to do. The requested use variance, if granted, will certainly not alter the essential character of the neighborhood since everybody else is already doing it, which I know, if everybody's doing it, it doesn't mean you're still supposed to jump off the bridge. And the alleged hardship has not been self-created in the... I don't know, if I were not on the board, I would not necessarily know, based on all of the other businesses around, that I could do sales at that location without fixing the cars that I'm selling. And then let me ask, I'm going to ask another question, and I know I'm talking too much. If I go back to, all right, 1 or 2 through 4 make sense? So just number 1 is the one that has thrown us into the weeds? We had another application in the past before this board that was an existing use on a piece of property for the gentleman that does the snowblower, snow plowing throughout town, and wanted to add another use to his property because based on interest rates went up and cost of equipment went up and the economy and COVID and everything, he couldn't make ends meet and his business could no longer be viable unless he was able to rent out two bays of that building. How is this different? Respectfully in asking, not argumentatively.
That's the whole point. It may not be different. And that would be the type of historical fact and approval that the applicant, which you just did for him, could point to as a reason why you should approve it.
Well, that's, I'm just trying to, like, what did we have? I mean, we had a lot of numbers from that gentleman that basically showed his business would not be liquid without being able to pay some...
Was that a special use permit, or was that a...
I thought it was a use variance, but maybe it was a special use permit. And then that was my other question, but Eric helped me realize that it's not possible, is could we do a special permit that's only for this applicant at this location, but if you sell it?
It's not a permitted use.
Right.
Is it Mallett?
Mallett.
Mallett. Mr. Mallett, how long have you owned the property for?
Technically, right now, sir, we don't own the property. We are in under a lease with the property through Norweb Leasing. The contingencies of us purchasing this property is going to be based upon whether we're going to be permitted to build a service department to continue doing business in Webster.
Are we aware of that fact?
No.
No.
No. So it's a leased...
It's in the paperwork. It's in the initial agreement with that. Best Buy Auto Sales, I got the signed agreement from Norweb Leasing, allowing us to follow through with this process, knowing that we're not the titled owners to the property.
All right, but I guess I didn't realize that your plan was to purchase the property if...
So it's a leased lot.
...this use became...
So it's like a lease-to-buy type?
Correct, we have a first rate, we have a set amount, we have a set amount in a contract that, where we can purchase the property for.
Okay.
You know what I mean, that amount's set based upon what the property is now.
Oh yeah, it's on the application.
It is on the application, it's a-
Name, property owner.
The property owner is actually Norweb Leasing.
How long have they owned it, do you know?
To my understanding, they've owned it 20, 30 years.
Was it a car dealership before?
It's been a car dealership, to my understanding, for, I believe, like, someone mentioned, Joe Neary was there for a while. About 10 years ago, 15 years ago, maybe longer.
How long have you been there?
We've been there two years. The sales have been, the two years we've been in that property.
All right, let me ask you a question. So basically, you said lease-to-buy if you can get this to go through, right? If you can't, it sounded like for a minute you would have to move business out of Webster.
I mean, we'd have to definitely take that into consideration.
Take it, okay.
Absolutely. We have the option in the lease agreement with it. We have the amount to buy the property as it sits now, is ironed out. We do have an extension
Okay.
in place, so it would give us time if, it would give us time if we had to go that route. I mean, hopefully we don't have to. You know, we like the area, we've been, you know, we wanted to make sure that the area's gonna work for us as well, you know?
Okay, I understand that.
It makes sense that it would be permitted based on what else is currently in use in the neighborhood.
And it sounds like both those parties are in agreement with each other, too.
And we can show with the applicant's costs that are on average $210,000 a year, out of pocket more, by not being able to do their own internal service.
I think that also speaks, it's not necessarily strictly profit. It's also competitiveness with other used car dealers. What your overhead cost determines what you're gonna sell the cars for. I'd like to move the question if we can, I don't think we're gonna go around in circles personally. My concern is making sure that-
That it's only his property.
Right, and that our position is as bulletproof as we can make it. Which doesn't mean it's absolutely bulletproof, but if someone says you did this here, we can show every single reason why we said yes.
And I think the distinguishing factor here, if the board was inclined to approve it, is the proximity of the other service, the other mechanics, locations immediately adjacent to this one. I mean, that's a significant factor.
I mean, all of the auto sales within Webster that I'm aware of are between Hatch Road and Shuckraft.
No, but the 5 Mile Lander's a used car dealership, too. On the corner of 5 Mile.
Right, but then if I go further east of Hard Road-
The big ones, yes.
But that stretch on Ridge Road, that's, well, there's one guy on 5 Mile Line Road just north of Ridge, who's adjacent to the frontage properties that also has a used car lot.
Yeah, Crouch, Smith &amp; Oakeshaw Station next to American Legion, that was the one I was talking about.
That's within. But that's the only area within town that permits vehicle sales. And all of those vehicle sales, with the exception of the two that are around 5 Mile, do their own service. And I guess I don't know what happens in the property on 5 Mile Ridge. I'm not sure if they do service or not, I've never- I've only ever driven past it.
But there's not enough land for them to even build anything, because the Legion parking lot's behind them, so they're landlocked.
Well, I think we've kind of beat it as much as we can. Do we all move forward?
What is my secret? Just getting unlisted.
Did we do secret?
We did not yet.
Originally?
No, we did table the whole thing. Because we were talking in circles, but with less information before, so I think now we at least have the right information.
I'd rather depend on your notes than my memory.
Yeah, I have a crib sheet I typed up. All right, I'll make a motion for a, under New York CRR Section 617 of the Environmental Code, for a secret to be an unlisted action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone want to run through findings of fact? I've talked too much. I think we've covered, we've covered most of them. As far as unique circumstances, the alleged hardship relating to the property is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district because everyone else in the district that's doing this use is already, that is doing auto sales already has the ability to do auto service. The essential character of the neighborhood will not be altered if this use variance is granted because, again, two doors to the left, two doors to the right, within that section on the south side of Ridge Road, there are several other businesses already doing exactly what this applicant would like to do, and they've been there for years. I'll say it's not self-created, again, because the code is limiting this applicant to not be able to do what, I don't even know if they're your competitors, but your competitors and other similar businesses are doing right along the same stretch. The other remedy is that the applicant can continue to outsource, but if they continue to outsource, then there are gonna be an additional $210,000 or more thousand dollars out of pocket annually to not do this. But then the reasonable return, can we apply that to the reasonable return of the existing business without the additional function, or does it have to be upon the sale of the property? And I guess I don't, I don't know the right answer to that. I don't know how to, if I look at reasonable return two-pronged, either because I'm trying to sell it and I can't, or I'm trying to make a go of it with an allowable use, and within that allowable use, unless I don't have a little bit more of a use, I can't make a reasonable return. Which is kind of how I read that, but-
Isn't a question being competitive, too? As part of the reasonable return? You can't sell a car for, I'm just throwing numbers out there, $1,000 that somebody else can afford to sell for $800.
Well, and I guess let me ask the applicant that question. Does that then impact your pricing? And I know every car sale, there's some negotiation, but if currently, right now, you're paying an extra $1,600, all right, what was the delta between them? So, about $600 more to service it than, say, your competitor next door who's able to fix his own vehicles, are you eating that $600, or do you have to add that to the price of the car in order to continue to break even? Which then impacts your sales.
Yeah, we gotta, in order to stay competitive with our pricing, we gotta be able to afford to make the vehicle to New York standards service-wise. And with increasing of parts and everything else, it's, it would be hard to continue. I mean, it would, these figures are just gonna get worse as time goes. In order for us to price our cars competitively, to sell them, you know what I mean, it's a, if we're having to put more and more into the cars, we obviously have to sell them for for more and more money to try to not lose money.
Right.
To sell a car.
So in theory, because of this, your fixed car is, your fixed cost is $600 higher per vehicle than the next-door dealership for the same car?
Correct, we have to take that into accountability when pricing our vehicles as well, yes. Same thing with, like, the callback forms, like, it was further into the thing. We have to take that stuff, kind of stuff, into accountability as well. You know, we don't have a crystal ball to say whether something may or may not go wrong within the grace period of what New York State requires dealers to stand behind their vehicles for.
Right.
That as well, also takes an initial cost into effect that we have to account for. You know, it's, you know, there's, it's, I mean, it's-
Well, and it's risk that you're taking on.
Correct.
Because I'm assuming, I'm assuming all of your vehicles are used vehicles, they're not, are pre-owned vehicles, they're not new from-
They're all pre-owned, yeah.
Okay, so it's not like the Chevy dealer across the street, if I bring a warranty issue in, eventually Chevy pays that dealer, this is-
It's cost out of pocket.
Yeah, okay. Which adds another, another potential level of loss.
I mean, transporting the vehicles, we're less drivers on the road. You guys ever try to turn left out of Ridge Road on a Friday night at 5:30?
No more than necessary.
300 vehicles selling a year, that's, they gotta get transported somewhere, up and down, turning it out of there, Ridge Road, 104. Like I said, we're serving, we have to drive all the way out to Wayne County to find affordable labor rates that allows us to even stay in business.
I guess I'll ask the question, does anybody believe that we have enough information with which to make a, to grant a variance or make a motion? And then would someone like to be the one to make that motion, please?
I'll make the motion. What do we have to say? I'm going to approve the applicant's application as submitted. I'm going to approve the the use variance for Best Buy Auto Sales located at 771 Ridge Road, applicant Alan Mellett, to allow construction of a motor vehicle service station addition associated with an existing used car sales business on a 1.73 acre parcel avenue located in the MC Medium Intensity Commercial District under Sections 350-18, 350-70, and 350-101 of the code of the town of Webster.
Second.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
Mr. Miss Garrett?
Aye.
Mr. Spantinato?
Name.
Mrs. Vollo?
Aye. I guess I would like to include within the comments of the motion that the motion is granted based on the financial information that was submitted by this applicant. And I don't really need to, um, Erica, when I condition this, and you do need to obtain unnecessary governmental permits, one-year significant construction typically applies to an area variance, would that also apply in this case? Or one year to begin?
You can add that in to your approvals and your motion.
Okay.
That's up to the board. But a use variance runs with the land, so once it's granted.
Okay, but if, if the applicant were not to fulfill the use within some period of time, does it expire?
Correct, yes, it's-
Okay, so I guess I would condition it that if within one year from this evening's approval, if the applicant has not begun this secondary use at this facility, then the variance expires and we can come back and talk about it all over again?
Correct.
And I wouldn't think it would take a year to get the permits and whatnot and building built. Okay, does the board agree to that condition, please?
Yeah, yeah.
And all the board members have agreed by noting yes? All right. One more thing.
Okay, so you're approved.
Sound good?
John said to hang on for one moment. Sorry, what are we waiting on?
So how are you defining when doing that started?
I would say the use itself has to begin within one year of this meeting.
So if they're out in the parking lot, they got a hood open and they're, you want to present, come?
No.
So what you want to do is be specific.
Okay. All right.
You approved a 2,800 square foot building?
We have approved a 2,800 square foot building, and within one year of this meeting, you need to be within that building, not just in a tent in the back parking lot or working in the side parking lot.
Structure of the building has to be assembled, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, which I think is doable within 12 months.
Absolutely.
And you'll probably want to get that done
Soon as possible.
Soon as possible.
Correct.
To start saving something, so. All right, and the board is in agreement with that, then? That it will be within that 2,800 square foot? Because that will need planning board approval?
I don't know, will it?
That building is okay?
Okay, well, just-
Just get your permits from the town quickly.
This, so I'm clear understanding from here forward, I just need to get the building permits, huh?
You need to get your building permits. And according to Ms. Corso, you do not need to go to planning board for approval.
Okay.
But you can come to the town later this week, I would think, and get whatever paperwork you need and start your permitting process.
After the permits?
Correct. You can do that through the building department, they'll work with you on all of your building permits.
Drawings and all that, which is-
Correct. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a privacy fence at 457 Threshwood Lane. Applicant James Samuelson is requesting to allow a six-foot fence in the front yard of a corner lot. Um, the proposal is to construct a six-foot fence in the front yard of a corner lot. Um, is Mr. Samuelson here? If you want to come up to the podium. Relevant sections of the code, section 350-12, it's R3, single-family residential district, and 350-79B, no fence in excess of four feet in height shall be erected in the front setback of any residential.
Hold on, just walked out.
You're up, sir. Can I just explain your project, where it's going, et cetera?
So hopefully this is an easy layup for you guys.
It's a corner lot, um, and they're just looking to extend the fence out to the, I think there's a map and everything in there, in all your documents. Out to the right of way. And there are actually two other similar lots within eye distance of the set parcel. That's it. They're 438 Merwood and 446 Merwood, almost, are very similar. Again, corner lots with very small backyards. There is a swimming pool in the backyard currently, which was there when the property was purchased. Um, I'm guessing this is probably, I don't know, but I assume this is probably a pretty standard request with corner lots like this with such small backyards. And creates an area, more lawn area for young kids to play, separate from the pool area, and that sort of thing.
Makes sense. Do any of the board members have any other questions?
You gotta keep the existing fence around the pool and just add the new one along the right of way and then back to the house.
I believe, I believe that, yeah, the fence is gonna, the old fence is gonna go down, so we're gonna add new fence.
Okay. Um, any side openings where the new fence is gonna be either, you know?
Well, there'll be, there'll be. There'll be a gate, probably. The fence is gonna slide forward a little bit on the end of the house and the gate would be there by the side door.
And then what type of fence? I know it's stockade right now.
I've, no, another wood type fence.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I, I understand with the corner lots, I've lived in the corner house many times. It just, as I drove down the street and, and looking at the fence, it looks like you're gonna build a wall there with a six-foot fence, and it's, and I understand why you want it, but I'm just wondering if you could set it back a couple feet more and put some plantings in to kind of break up the view of the, of the wooden fence so that it's not a solid wall? That it looks more inviting in a residential area, I guess? If you would consider that.
I think, I mean, it sounds like a good idea. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't requested of other, others in the neighborhood, it sounds like kind of there's been precedent set, I mean, they don't seem to have plantings at the other places.
I apologize for that, but I wasn't on the board.
Well, I guess my question for Erica, because I don't know, um, I know we do have other corner lots in the neighborhood that have fences in both front yards or in the side front yard. Were they all the way up to the right of way? The ones that I can remember have been set back five or 10 feet from the right of way, but I don't, I don't know everybody that's been approved in that neighborhood just.
There have been examples of both, right to the property line and set back five or so feet. Again, in this neighborhood, I would have to look in our records exactly to see what was approved. So I can't speak to this neighborhood specifically, um, but in the past, yes, there has been ones right up to the property line and ones that have been set back five or so feet.
Okay.
This is James, I was speaking for him, I'm gonna let him answer a few questions. Maybe that's about moving the fence forward a little bit and put some plantings in in front of it, so.
Sir, can I just have you state your name for the record, just so that we?
Sure. Yep, my name is James Samuelson.
Do you understand what the board is saying to, to, instead of it going all the way to the right of way, bring it in five or 10 feet, just so that it, there's a little bit of?
Yes.
A little bit more space?
In fact, I think I have it proposed at 10 feet off the right of way, already.
Oh, it's 10 feet off the right of way? It's not all the way up to the right of way?
That is correct, yep.
Oh, okay.
That's actually the utility easement that it's drawn on, right, the right of way.
Which is.
Okay, so you're already, my apologies.
That's okay.
So is it going up to?
It's going right up to the utility easement, which is 10 feet in.
When I was there, there was a, um, I don't remember what kind of tree, but some type of an evergreen that was along that area, is it gonna be roughly in line with that?
Yeah, so it's actually, um, it won't even be to that last evergreen tree.
Okay.
Um, there's a fire hydrant that sits kind of underneath the edge of that evergreen tree. Is that what you're referring to, that, in the, at the corner? It's actually a pear tree.
Um, no, the, the neighbors evergreens in the back.
Yep, correct, yeah, it's a blue spruce.
So it's not gonna, it's not gonna be as far out as those?
No, it'll actually not even probably come to the last tree.
Okay.
It'll be inside the last tree. Cause I believe that, that yellow line that appears on the screen is the right of way. I'm gonna be 10 foot inside of that.
Yeah, so he's, he's coming up to the end of the right of way, the.
No, he's going up to the.
Utility right away.
Right up to the utility easement. And quite frankly, I think, um, I know shrubs do not have an extensive root system, but I, I'm opposed to planting anything major over any type of utility.
Yeah.
Because quite frankly, even if you put in beautiful shrubs, they come up and whatever utilities underneath there gets dug up, they're under no obligation to replace anything since it's their easement. So I would be very hesitant to put a condition on him that may cost him more money and had, don't, and won't guarantee the results that you're looking for.
Right, for example.
That's why I asked if he could set it back a couple feet more and do some plantings.
That would be acceptable to me, if it was like three, four feet tops, I can still shoehorn in some plants.
Yeah, because, for example, if green light comes in, they're gonna directional drill under that, they'll run what, everything underground so they don't have to replace anything since they're already in easement, utility easement.
That easement is R G D specifically?
Yeah, I'm just using green light because I know they directional drill, because they used to be on a fiber optic screw that, before.
I think they've already been through the neighborhood, luckily, so.
So, what I think I'm hearing is that you're willing to, um, bring the fence four feet inside of the utility easement, so that there's room to put just a little, something to break, break up the wall of the fence?
If that's a requirement, yes.
Is that what you're looking for, John?
Yes.
It's definitely not what they did across the street.
All right. With, yeah, I'm trying to, 393, yes? Go.
It's actually Merwood, so if you, if you had south, it's 446 Merwood.
What's the address?
446 Merwood.
Right there on the corner.
Yep, corner lot, right there.
Okay, that's.
That's, that's a prime example of what I'm looking to do.
Okay, and, and you see, okay, so it's in.
And they're about 10 foot inside the right of way as well. Probably ran into a similar, similar situation where there, I don't know if there's utility easement over there or not, but.
So just to clarify, you are looking to do essentially exactly what 446 has, you're not going right up to the property line, you're gonna be 10 feet within your property line, which is also away from the utility easement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Um, one slight difference, you said exactly like that, not quite exact, um, I don't intend to come to the front of the garage.
Correct.
I don't intend to.
In terms of placement to the property line?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's certainly not going to be a line of sight issue?
No, maybe because it's.
Back far enough.
It's back far enough.
It's back far enough.
All right, let me open it for public hearing. Um, this meeting is a public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak for or against this application can come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will return the discussion back to the board and close the public hearing. Any comments?
My own personal opinion is much as I appreciate landscaping, if you have him set it off, a couple feet off, it gives him the option of doing it instead of making it.
Okay.
A requirement. He can do it if he wants, cause I, having a corner lot myself, you, you want at least some sort of boll strip or gravel bed just to make it easier to mow.
Right, right.
So I, I get that, but, you know, and then if you're telling him he needs to plant it, and we don't force a planting plan upon him, he could go one shrug and then say, I met the requirements.
Well, and I, yeah, I'm.
And that's what I'm trying to avoid, is that he met our requirement, I added, I put an arm of voiding in there, and he's met our requirements. If we tell him to set it back a couple feet, so if he wants to at a later date, do it himself, he has the ability to do so. And unless we're gonna tell him he needs to plant, you know, junipers, five, like 24-inch diameter, install a five feet on center for the entire 60 feet or so, I, I don't think we actually want to design it for him.
No, and I, a wooden, a wooden fence to me is much more, or much less in your face than a white vinyl fence, in that it just kind of blends in better.
No, I, I agree, it's just my opinion, I mean, I don't.
The finish side of the fence is gonna be on the outside anyway, um.
And to clarify, this was not a light vinyl fence, this is, this is a pine fence.
Right, I heard, sorry, I said.
Yeah, okay.
I don't, like, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I don't want to force plantings that bear on that.
No, 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 there's.
Your wife is going to have an argument about what she wants along the outside of that fence, so.
And I wasn't trying to, I think your suggestion is great, but unless we have a planting plan that we can enforce.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's kind of toothless, that, you know.
Then sort of.
Technically, ground cover is a plant, so we can just put ground cover on the bank of it and say he did it, and he'd legally be correct, so. But normally, I agree with 100% of you.
My only, my only concern is it is a long stretch of fence.
It's like 60 feet.
That's a long stretch, and all you're gonna look at is a wood wall. And I just thought if, somehow it could be broken up.
I don't disagree, but I, I question whether we're the proper authority to enforce the visual view shed there.
Well, my only concern is that we haven't forced other applicants to do it. But we can certainly suggest it. I, I see what you mean now, cause it will be.
60 feet, I don't think the one that they just showed on Merwood is that long. But that's okay, I mean, if you haven't done it before, I'm, but.
All right, let me do seeker. Pursuant to New York's here, our section 617 of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type 2 seeker.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, does anyone want to run through findings?
I'll do the findings. If approved, the, uh, application would not have an undesirable effect on the existing character of the neighborhood, um, would be a detriment to his or any other properties. There is no other remedy to get some privacy in your backyard than, than fencing it in because it, especially since it is a corner lot, so there is no other remedy, no realistic remedy. The request is not significant, in fact, it's 10 feet, a minimum of 10 feet and more than it needs to, that it could be, and that, um, it will not have any adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And, um, it really isn't self-created because it's a corner lot, and, um, it's difficult to get any usable private area on a corner.
All right, I am gonna add in, um, the granite, because it's a corner lot, it has two front yards, but if it were a traditional side yard setback, the six-foot fence could be permitted right on the lot line. So in this case, it will be better than that because it's going to be in by the 10-foot easement and then another four feet?
I, I accept that, yes.
Okay.
With the option to landscape.
Yes. But make it attractive, a wooden fence, and it, it is going to be a wooden fence, is what you are agreeing to. Um, would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I make a motion that, um, we approve, uh, an area variance for a privacy fence located at 457 Threshwood Lane, um, to, to grant a area variance to allow a six-foot privacy fence in the front yard of a corner lot on a 0.45 acre parcel, having SPL number 063.14-3-16, located in the R3 single-family residential district under sections 350-12, 350-79, and 350-101 of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay, included in that will be that it will be four feet off of the utility easement. Second, go ahead.
And that the fence will be four feet off the existing utility easement.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mrs. Vollo.
Aye.
Mr. Spantonio.
Aye.
Mr. Miss Garrett.
Aye.
Mr. Corso.
Aye.
All right, you have your variance, um, conditioned upon one year of meaningful construction to erect your fence and the receipt of all proper permits from the town of Webster, which you can begin getting tomorrow.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Congratulations, thank you.
Uh, next application is a three seasons room at 918 Lotharo Circle? Lothario Circle, applicant Joseph Swick. Uh, R3 single-family residential district is requesting a rear yard setback of 50.5 feet where 50 feet is required, uh, with the proposed construction of a 329.8 square foot three seasons room. This is in the R3 single-family residential district, relevant town code sections is 350-12B, 5C, which is the minimum rear yard.
All right, you have your variance, um, conditioned upon one year of meaningful construction to erect your fence and the receipt of all proper permits from the Town of Webster, which you can begin getting tomorrow.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Congratulations, thank you.
Uh, next application is a three seasons room at 918 Lotharo Circle. Lothario Circle, applicant Joseph Swick. R3 single-family residential district is requesting a rear yard setback of 50.5 feet where 50 feet is required uh, with the proposed construction of a 329.8 square foot three seasons room. This is in the R3 single-family residential district. Relevant town code sections is 350-12B5C, which is the minimum rear yard setback requirement.
You might have to approach, I have signatures for minority properties that, uh,
Thank you.
are rear, what the plans, and, um, we got a number of copies. So the, on the left side, on the top, this is, uh, people in Lothario Circle, and people on the right side, it's not even projected.
Okay.
Uh, so what was, what I had there before, at least 11 years ago, I built a 17 by 24 deck, uh, which, uh, was, I think at that time, it was a 50-foot setback. That was acceptable for the deck. Uh, I kind of want to take up the same, uh, same amount of area. It's actually a smaller, uh, so instead of a 17 by 24, I want to reduce it to a 17 by 19 and a few inches. Uh, but with the closing it, uh, I found out later on that I had, uh, an additional 10 feet that I, uh, of a setback that I wasn't aware of before, uh, which would not be really functional for this kind of a setting or for a building because that would reduce me down from a 17-foot room to a seven-foot deep room. Uh, so, you know, and I'm coming in front of the board, I'm asking for a variance for an additional 10 feet, uh, so that that can have an actual reasonable living space, um, three season room of a size of 17 by 19 and a few inches, so. The reason the deck is gone is because me and my neighbor both put up decks at the same time 11 years ago and they both rotted out, uh, even though they had airflow and everything, and I wasn't about to reinvest into another deck and have the same thing happen again, so we decided to step it up a little bit, go for a three season room.
Makes sense. And it gives you a little bit more use throughout the year as opposed to just the three months of nice weather that we had.
Right, and my, you know, my daughter's 14 and, uh, she's only gonna be in the house another four years and, and she's been asking for this, so I'd kind of like to give it to her, so.
All right, any comments or questions from the board members? I did notice when I was driving through the area, um, this, this lots, especially in Lothario Circle, are very short rear yards, which I don't know, but I'm suspecting this was probably developed as a cluster subdivision in order to make the houses closer together and then have some preserved space elsewhere in the subdivision, um, which is helpful except when any of the homeowners want to come put some type of a structure onto the back of the house. Uh, most of the houses along at least that side of the street are lined up within the 50 feet of the rear lot line. Um, and there's also behind most of the houses, a, a polydahedron of sorts, so that most of them are really not within view from the neighbors on the street behind them, which is John Leo Drive. It, there are a couple of other three season rooms that have gone up in that subdivision with some encroachment into the setback for the same reason, because the 50-foot, the houses at the 50-foot line in most instances. Um, I will open this up for public comment. If anyone would like to speak for or against this application, please come to the podium and identify yourself. Sure. All right, seeing no one, I will return the discussion back to the board. In pursuant to NYCRR, section 617 of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I can find my findings. I wonder if you'd like. An undesirable change will not be produced in the character of the neighborhood, um, in no detriment to nearby properties. There are a couple of other similar additions within, I'll call it the larger neighborhood of Lothario and John Leo Drive, and the rear yards are fairly short. The benefit really cannot be achieved by any other method, as the applicant noted. By bringing this into compliance, the depth of the room is only seven feet and it is replacing a deck that was actually deeper than this addition will be at the end. The requested area variance is not substantial. The applicant's deck was further into the setback than this room is going to be, so it'll be an improvement to the setback with respect to having a structure there. Um, it will not have any inverse physical or environmental, or adverse it's not the environment, um, or the neighborhood or the district. The, um, backyards do have some greenery in between the yards, so it'll be shielded somewhat from the neighbor to the rear. I do also want to make note that we do have signatures both from the surrounding homes on Lothario Circle and the homes behind this addition on John Leo Drive that have signed that they are in agreement of this addition. And most variances are self-created, but given the placement of the house on the lot, there's really not anything that can be added to the rear of the structure without permission being granted from the zoning board. Anything anyone would like to add to that? Nothing? All right. I'll make a motion to grant an area variance for a three season room at 918 Lothario Circle to allow a rear setback of 40.5 feet where 50 feet is required for the construction of a 329.8 square foot three season room on a .42 acre parcel. The dimensions of that to be 17, all right, this is tiny print.
17 by 19.
17 feet deep by 19.3 feet wide. And it is in a single-family residential district and it is falling under sections 350-12 and 350-101 of Webster town code.
Second.
Mrs. Volno?
Aye.
Mr. Spannann?
Aye.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
Mr. Mascarett?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
You have your variance. You have one year to start meaningful construction and you must obtain all necessary governmental permits and good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Uh, the only question I have is, uh, when I was up at the office, signing up to come down here, it told me it's gonna take a couple of days before I can come in and get the permit. Is that accurate or can I come in tomorrow again?
You can fill out the permit tomorrow and start that process. It will take about five to seven days for the building inspector to actually issue that permit to you.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, final application for the evening is 860 Buttermilk Circle, Michael Howser? Howser, uh, looking in R3 single-family residential district, uh, is looking to allow 13-foot side yard setback where 15 is required in the construction of a 30-square-foot second-story bump out over the garage. Relevant sections of the town code is 350-12, R3 single-family residential district and 350B, sorry, pardon me, 350-12B5B1. Side setbacks from a structure is 15 feet. You're up, sir.
All right, thank you for, uh, reviewing my application. Just looking to have a bonus room essentially on, on top of the garage. The bump out will only be on the second story, uh, I think it's two and a half feet. So that brings me to 13 feet within the property line when I, when the orders is 15 feet. Um, so that's it, and it's not running across the entire length of the home. It's only like, uh, Miss Corsi said, it's only about 30 square feet of actual bump outs. Two and a half by 12 something, 15 feet something for that matter. And that, and that's it. The, as far as the neighbor on that side, uh, it's our backyard. They have trees planted on our, on our property lines, so I, they're not gonna notice, I would imagine either way. Uh, but that's the scope of our project.
All right, and as Erica had explained to me, um, that it's not the whole footprint that's going to be exceeding the setback, but it's going to be a portion of the upstairs, which two feet of the second floor is allowed to hang over into the setback, but this will actually be three feet. But it won't be for the entire addition as well. Is that, did I explain that correctly?
Correct. Um, we, our code allows a cantilever to be two feet within the side setback, so, um, Mr. Howser is looking for essentially
An additional foot.
An additional foot, correct.
Yep.
Just on the, just on the second.
And on the, it was like from the rendering, the back corner of it too.
Um, I believe so. So it's just this part in red here, sir.
Yeah, the, yeah, the back corner of it.
But based on where the lot line is, it's not even the whole thing, so it's, okay.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments from the rest of the board? It's very straightforward. All right, I will open the discussion up to the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against this application?
Lot of complaints.
Seeing no one, I will return the discussion back to the board. And pursuant to NYCRR, section 617 of the environmental, environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Would anyone like to run through the findings?
Sure. Uh, there would be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor will, uh, the application be a detriment to nearby properties if, uh, the variance were to be granted. Uh, the, there is no other remedy based on the existing house layout and what they need to do. It seems to me that's the best option for expanding the area that they, they need to go into. And the fact that as the, as it's a bump out, it really only exceeds the, um, the allowable cantilever by one foot. It's not, because it's only a two and a half to three-foot bump out, it's not a significant, uh, request. And the, uh, if we're granted the area variance, would not have an adverse impact on the physical, environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And, uh, basically because it's existing house, it's really not entirely self-created, uh, situation. In fact, it, it seems to be a really good solution to, uh, obtain more room. So, I think that's it.
Anyone like to add anything today? Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
You're doing so well.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we approve an area variance located at 860 Buttermilk Circle uh, to allow a side setback of, um, 12 feet where 15 feet is required uh, with the, associated with the construction of a 30-square-foot second-story bump out over the garage on a 0.43 acre parcel, having SPL number 094.06.1.10 in the R3 single-family residential district under sections 350-12 and 350-101 of the code of the Town of Webster.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
Mrs. Volno?
Aye.
Mr. Spannann?
Aye.
Mr. Mascarett?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
You have your variance granted. Um, you have one year meaningful construction to start this addition and you must obtain all necessary governmental permits. And you can start the process on our own with the town building.
Will do, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, with that, that is the end of the official business of the zoning board appeals with respect to applications. We do have two administrative matters. The first of which is the approval, oh my goodness, of the April minutes. I will make a motion to approve the April minutes, the minutes of the April 8, 2005 zoning board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then
Are we just recording right now or are we?
Yes.
Yes.
And this one is, I will make a motion. I do have enough people. Okay, I will make a motion to grant, to approve the May 13, 2025 minutes for the zoning board of appeals meeting.
Second, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those are now approved as well. And the June, it's still with you. Okay. All right. And with that, good evening, and we will close the zoning board meeting at 8:27.
Here we are.